Good evening and welcome to the June 10th, 2019, Litchfield Board's election meeting. The board has just come out of a paperwork review. I'd like to call them meeting to order at 6:00 PM. In attendance tonight, we have Eagle Scout, Justin Haley, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stand, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I didn't even notice the extra patty.
So the first item on the agenda this evening is review and approval of consent items. We have the May 13th, 2019, and June 1st, 2019, meeting minutes. We have the treasurer's reconciliation for April. We have tax, one tax credit and exemption, one land use change tax. Account pay, excuse me, payroll manifest of May 21st, 2019, and $211,195.17. Of May 28th, 2019, and $330,492.11. Of June 4th, 2019, $947,878.99. And June 11th, 2019, $19,530.63. We have a payroll manifest of May 23rd of 2019, in the sum of $53,421.56. We have another one for the May 30th of 2019, in $53,432.96. We have June 6th of 2019, in the sum of $61,589.23. And June 13th of 2019, in $53,770.27. We also have the 2019 dog warrant. Are there any items members would like to remove confirmed consent? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the items.
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lynch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries 3-0-0. Is there any other business that members would like to add to the agenda this evening?
I'd like to press this down through the last person to sign it, please.
Perfect.
This is the dog warrant.
The dog warrant?
Yeah.
You've got a lot of dogs that need a resting.
I'd like to maybe ask if we could consider moving the meetings to 7 o'clock in the evening so that not only can some of us that work out of towns make it at a better time and maybe some of the taxpayers can be here also without having to rush too much.
Okay, so how about we table that till we have a full board so we all can discuss what the input would be to reschedule at 7 o'clock in the evening and also what the impact would be to the town? So Troy, do you want to add that on to next discussion point for us?
And I'm not on the list. My dog is good.
You have dinner job.
No, I did.
Yeah.
Make sure my kids are okay.
They're all good, don't worry.
Thank you.
Public inputs will occur no earlier than 6:15 PM. The first item of business is the Justin Haley Eagle Scout First Responder Monument Update. Justin, if you'd like to come forward, please. If you could state your name and address, that'd be great.
Okay, my name is Justin Haley and I live at 60 Pilgrim Drive, Litchfield.
Welcome.
So I have paper copies of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have visited you before and I, my Eagle project has been approved. So my name is Justin Haley, I'm a life scout and the process of working on my Eagle rank. And I'm here to update you on how my project's going so far. Uh, so the price is a little bit more than I originally thought it was going to be because we're gonna have to rent a cat machine to level the ground out there. I don't know if you saw the post as you were heading in, but that's where it's going to be. So the total is now around $3,500 as opposed to the $3,000 it was before. Um, I'm going to be creating a walkway to fundraise the monument. So there will be a 12-foot by 5-foot walkway leading to the monument. And I'll be selling engraved bricks to fundraise and I have all the order forms, which you guys should have too. Um, I made a sketch of the layout on the top of the monument, which will have the fire department, the police department, and the town seal on it. And there will be room for memorials if we want to engrave names on them after the monument's finished. Uh, so the phase that I'm going in right now is fundraising and I've started research on the granite and the engravings. Uh, I was just out there yesterday starting to prepare the ground location for the monument marking things. And yeah, so next steps, I'm probably gonna be bringing in cement trucks and equipment to level the ground and fundraising where we started. Questions, comments, concerns?
I think it's fantastic.
Great job. Have you reached out to any local businesses or residents to try to assist and help you with the costs?
Um, not as of yet, but I will be soon.
Especially from the, you know, leveling out and so forth. And I know we do have a bunch of landscapers and earth pushers and so forth in town. And I also personally know somebody who does a lot of granite cutting.
Okay.
So if you wanted to reach out to me, I could put you in contact with them and maybe they could help you with the granite portion of it.
Alright.
But I think it's fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
You're most welcome. So what's your anticipated completion date?
Um, near the end of the summer, beginning of spring, fall, I forgot. Um, yeah, somewhere around there.
Great.
16 weeks ago winters, you'll be done.
Yep.
Guess I'll have to look forward to.
I think it's a, it's a wonderful thing you're doing for the town.
Thank you.
I think it's great, to be honest with you. Congratulations, this is wonderful. And there's people out there that will help.
Definitely, so please reach out.
Equipment and stuff like that, they'll bring it in to help.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Good, thank you.
That's great, thanks for updating us.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
One question, a contact number that we can have for you?
Uh, yeah.
Because this way, if we've got people that want to help.
Just an email address, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Email, yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather.
It happens.
Okay, great, thanks.
More frequently than some.
Wonderful.
That's right, Pat. This is gonna be good.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be great.
Go ahead and bench us so we can stare at it.
Kevin, you can just lay on the ground.
Your next item is the policy review of the fund balance, purchasing, and write-off. Mr. Brown?
Alright, our last meeting, we, as you know, we've been reviewing policies. The last meeting, we introduced these three policies. They both, they've all been in existence for some time now. Uh, the newest one is the write-off policy. Um, we'll start with the fund balance policy, as I explained in our last meeting. The fund balance policy outlines five different areas, five different funds. We have the non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, committed fund balance. We have an assigned fund balance, we have the unassigned fund balance. So pretty much those things that, um, where funds have been raised and appropriated at town meeting through a special warrant article, those are committed funds. They can only be used for that specific purpose. Um, we have other funds that are, um, assigned to a, like a capital reserve fund and they can only be spent for those purposes for that fund. Pretty much all, what we talk about a lot during the budget process and at the deliberative session is the unassigned fund balance. That's, that's where you'll hear a lot of discussion with the auditors. And that is the, the one fund that is pretty much, um, once you, once a year, it's established, the balance, the auditors will determine what the balance of the unassigned fund balance is. And it's a, um, it's a collection of funds of all your, um, revenues that we collected in excess of what we planned and any funds that were turned back that were not expended. And also, not to get, you know, complicated, but we also raise overlay every year in anticipation that we may have to grant tax abatements. So we actually raise that money through taxation. If we don't grant, um, abatements that equal the amount that we raised, that becomes surplus at the end of the year as well. So, uh, the, the unassigned fund balance can be used, um, by the selectmen, um, only with approval of town, town meeting. So you'll see a lot of times we'll go with a warrant article, we'll try to address a capital need, a one-time expenditure, and we'll try to use the unassigned fund balance. At the same time, the unassigned fund balance provides us with cash flow throughout the year. And this, um, our, our fund balance, uh, a year ago was 1.9 million. So we use that money, uh, we don't have to go out and borrow money for anticipation of receiving taxes. So trying to keep the county government, the school system, and our local government, um, paying all the bills and payroll, the unassigned fund balance is an important part of our cash flow. So we, we have to manage it. And you'll hear the auditors talk about it this fall. The most important thing, fund balance, is to know, um, your retainage. And we've set a guideline of 8% to 12%. And when we go and set our tax rate, this is actually looked at, um, by DRA and they have a calculation that they do so that they know that you're in that, within that range. It's only guidance, some towns have chose, uh, to be much higher and some have dropped below that 8%. If you were going to go out and get financing, um, and, and, you know, financial markets may not be too happy if you only retaining about 2%, 3%.
Yep.
So.
We're actually.
We're currently rate about 8%, just a little bit more than 8%. And I'm hoping to see that it grows this year when the auditors come in. I'm hoping that, um, it's somewhere around 8.5, maybe 8.3 quarters. We'll, we'll know that in the fall. So that's, that's our, um, the unassigned fund balance and, you know, um, it's a policy that we review on an annual basis. And you'll probably hear a lot more discussion about it as you start putting together warrant articles and, um, you know, your annual operating budget. Because everyone likes to, um, you know, try to purchase something with the unassigned fund balance. Our purchasing policy has been reviewed, uh, and amended in the past several years. Uh, I think we actually have it, um, the levels that are working really good for the department heads and our boards and committees. It basically outlines the way we go about making day-to-day purchases. And real simply, we, you know, any purchase of $5,000 or less, department heads have, uh, complete authority to make those decisions within their budget limitations. When we do a purchase of $5,000, um, up to $12,000, then it requires a purchase order and the town administrator has to approve that purchase order. There's also a condition that, um, we go out and seek three, um, proposals from qualified vendors. There are some exceptions that can be waived and you've seen me bringing those exceptions to the board and the board has to vote to approve those waivers on a case-by-case basis. Anything over $12,000 requires the board of selectmen's approval prior to the purchase. And we've been, you know, we've been doing this, uh, since, you know, the start of the year, you've seen a lot of stuff come forward.
Now, based on our meeting the other day on the local emergency operation plan, do we want to go in and put a clause under case of emergency? How do we want to?
Nope, that's a good point. When we, uh, after that meeting, I went back to the purchasing policy and I found there's an actual section that's dedicated to emergency purchase. Yes, there is section eight, seven, emergency procurements. So it basically has provisions in there that allows department heads, um, officials to go out, make those purchases. And then we, we kind of do everything, um, you know, retroactive. Still, there'd be some public process involved or board selectmen's process where we still ratify these things. But we can go right out and make those purchases during floods, you know, severe weather events. So that's already in there.
But it really doesn't distinguish what type of emergency, what governs our emergency. You know, and sitting through those meetings, I guess there's three different levels now?
Well, the, th- those levels were separate from, from town operations. Those, those were levels that trigger federal approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it, do we have an emergency operation plan in place?
We're currently, um,
Or you're.
We're currently writing one.
You're writing one?
We're updating it.
So is this gonna be part of that expenditure, what you're trying to throw into it?
No, it's not.
No, this would be a separate document, but, um, so in the emergency operations plan, it, it will make reference to the town's purchasing policy.
So when we were sitting with the consultant pulling this together, part of it came up is, do we have a way to make quick emergency purchases that are outside the guidelines? Say we couldn't get the whole board together because we had to spend $20,000 and had to be done immediately. Is there a, is there something governing within our purchasing policy that will allow that to happen?
Okay, let's bring me up to date and probably Bob. When did this all start about your consultant? Was this before my time?
We've.
Yeah, it's a grant.
It's a grant, yeah.
It was a grant that probably was received before election.
Yeah.
So it was a grant that, that got the consultant to help you?
Correct, and what is all the department has to sit together.
I understand where it came from. Typically, yeah. So it's, it's federal money that pays for the consultant and then the town's match is 50% and it's all in kind. So the time that we, we put into it.
And our hours sitting there can also be charged back towards the grant, so even more money gets taken in for it. And this grant also, I believe, allowed the fire chief to get the funding, the $40,000 funding that we got to outfit the local emergency operation room, better known as the community center. So he was able to go off and get that grant for us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next.
The next one is the write-off policy. This is fairly new, uh, just adopted back in June of 2016. This was at the request of our auditors. So it's, it's been in place for just a few years. Uh, and it really just outlines the procedures that the finance department and other departments follow along with the town, town administrator position, um, for all these invoices that we submit, uh, and they go unpaid. So, um, typically what this really, um, applies to is normally it's special duty, um, the special detail, detail, um, bills and our ambulance bills. We have a third-party collection agent now, so when we've gone through every possible way of trying to collect the money, uh, we eventually, we turn, uh, the account over to the third-party collection agency and then they go pursue these funds uh, and they get a certain commission on anything that they're collecting. So I think it wasn't long ago that I was before the board and, uh, and it always happens when the auditors come in, they identify the amount that we write off for the ambulance, they'll standing ambulance debt. So we write that off in accordance with this policy. The debt's still actively being collected by the third-party collection agency.
To educate me, have we had a large debt not being paid? And which is the most appropriate?
Everything is, everything's good, it's the ambulance. So I think, you know, we've.
Was it every three years? They like carry it for three years?
So we keep it on our books, um, up to three years.
Okay.
Anything uncollected after three years, we write it off our books, but it's already gone to collection. But, uh, you know, to be honest with you, the, we'll be lucky to get 1% to 2% of the amount that we, uh, write off. It's usually due to the fact that it's gone through the insurance, you know, it's gone through everything. People just don't have the funds to pay the bill, so. And it's a large amount, it can be anywhere from 8,000 up to 20, 25,000.
Each year? That's the number you're talking, or each run?
It's, it's.
It's amazing, because insurance companies are involved in it and sometimes these, it, it takes 16 months to get an ambulance bill, pay around $800, $1,200. And of course, it's on the types of.
Cars is rented inside.
Yeah. Usually the medicine.
Yep. So I think what we're looking for now is just a motion to accept the fund balance, the purchasing and the write-off policies as we've reviewed last meeting and, um, all have a chance to look at and as they state today.
We waiting for motion?
Yes.
I'm making a motion, so.
Motion by Mr. Larry?
I'll second it, it's my turn.
Mister Lynch, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries 3-0-0. The next item we have is the recruitment process for the police chief. So I took some time and I met with Chief O'Brien, just trying to understand, um, what is the policy, what is the procedure normally within a department when you want to go out and get the new police chief or a chief in a division? I've also talked to a couple of the people in the law enforcement. And usually the process is, is if the force is functioning well, you try to promote from within. And by promoting from within, you're showing everybody who works there that there is steps you can go throughout the force to get going and to grow within the department. Also, we've invested a lot of money in our police officers to get them trained. We do a very good job when it comes to our training cycle. So based on all those discussions, I personally think that we should look internally for the next police chief and I'd like to get the input from Bob and Kevin on what their thoughts also are on it.
I agree 100%, I was gonna bring it up the same way. If you're, it's like when you work someplace and you want to get up the ladder, you don't want to kick, kick them out. You want to work to get through it. I'd rather see it internal, plus be better for morale.
Yes.
Most, most, if you look around at the other cities and towns that have police chiefs and they stayed in-house and then once they stay in-house, they normally don't have any morale problems going up. Bring it outside.
Patrol enforcement, their senior staff stays, they just did the same thing in Hudson and also in Nashville.
Nashville, Hudson, Milford, they did the same thing there.
We were fortunate that two residents from our town got those positions.
Yep.
So he's got a good second in command and sergeant.
He does.
And sergeant, he's a good man, he's a good cop.
And I think we could look and we could have a nice flow of.
He's got his master's.
Promoting within it.
I concur.
He is one of the candidates in that he, um, is gonna be going to the FBI academy soon, so.
Yep.
You know, that's, that's the path I'd like to take and it seems that both of you are in agreement also.
You know, I can make a motion that we proceed with that.
Motion by Mister Lynch.
Second.
Second by Mister Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries 3-0-0.
You got an extra horn for Pat?
I can mic your microphone close up, please?
I believe our microphones are only for TV, uh, in the room. We'll try to speak up louder in the room for you.
Pat, you got tradition, you can sit here.
Being that it's 6:28, I would like to open up public comment. It's always the will of the board to want to answer our citizens' questions. There are times that, um, when it's a personnel issue, we cannot answer. It's not because we don't want to answer, it's because that we legally cannot answer. Um, I do know that a lot of questions this evening will pertain to Mister Pinciero's resignation. And, um, as I said, we'd love to be able to answer questions, but if it's directly with his employment, we cannot. We have spoken with legal counsel and they have indicated that if Mister Pinciero would like to do a waiver of his employment record and all of his, um, items around this matter, that we could accept that and we could hold a special meeting to answer all the citizens' comments at that time. So whomever would like to come forward, please do so. I just ask that you state your name and your address clearly. Our minute taker is actually remotely, so, um, we may know who you are, but he may not know who you are. So whomever would like to approach?
You can go, Pat, you go, Chris.
Thank you. David Cady, 1 Colby Road? I will be loud. So I just have a few questions. Can you guys tell me who was responsible? Actually, first off, I'm not, I'm not sure who you are. Who, what's your name?
Oh, Troy Brown, the town administrator.
Okay, thank you. I just want to know who I'm talking to. Uh, who was responsible for the meeting agenda for, uh, the June 1st meeting? Like who put that agenda together? That agenda was put together, um, very quickly in order to give 24 hours notice. We were instructed by legal counsel that we needed to do it on June 4th, first, in order to accept the resignation. Okay. At that time, um, Troy and myself spoke. The only item we had on it was to accept the resignation. We put it out 24 hours in advance, that's why we pushed it to 4 o'clock in the afternoon. By the time we got it, after we put it out, that's when we learned of, they wanted to be a retirement party after and that there could be citizens here, but at that point, you know, our agenda had already been submitted for 24 hours. Okay. Why was it initially left out? Public, public input is not something that has to happen through RSA law. We as a town allow it, a lot of towns do, because we like to have our informed citizens. So normally on a special meeting, you won't see public input at all. Okay. As far as the, the resignation acceptance, or whatever you want to call it for that meeting, uh, how come you guys didn't give Jack a minute to give it to you officially? Like, did you ever receive? We never received anything. We were notified via the Hudson Litchfield News online of the resignation. So why would he not be allowed to give you his resignation at that meeting if that's what that meeting was to accept? Because we already had it that time. I mean, we, we did not schedule the meeting until the letter of resignation was handed to us. The letter, the, the letter meaning the newspaper? No, no, we, Troy, you physically were handed the letter of resignation correctly?
Yeah. We, we first learned of, um, Mister Pinciero's retirement and resignation, um, Thursday evening around 9 o'clock, I was informed, that it was in the Hudson Litchfield News.
Okay.
So the selectmen and myself had no knowledge of this. I met Mister Pinciero down at the highway garage Friday morning. Asked him, um, explained to him that I understand you're resigning and that he could be, um, he could go home for the day. And he gave me his resignation letter, so I had his resignation letter at about 7:20.
Was, was there any, was there any? Excuse me, FOMO, please. Please only comment where you're up front, just to keep it easy and make everybody be able to be heard, plus we have our minute taker. Thank you. Go ahead, David, I'm sorry. Sure. Was there, uh, was there any request for, for the road agent to finish out his term? That's a personnel issue that we can't speak about. It's not that we don't want to. We all would really want to. Let me ask you, was there a vote on it? Can I ask you that? If there was a vote on what? On whether or not to let him complete his term. Is that a decision that was made through the board, correct? To not allow him to do the resignation? Or to do a, a notice, if you will? The special meeting on Saturday was just to accept his resignation, had nothing else to do other than to accept it. Okay. So it was nothing more than accept, he had already resigned, so it was a formality to accept it for benefits, payroll, and so forth.
David, I'd like to make, make something clear. Being that Bob and I are the new people, this letter and stuff that they're referring to, we, we do not know anything about that, how it occurred. Except for the fact there was a letter written. Okay, and I can't comment on that, but we weren't part of the decision-making of that.
Okay.
Okay?
We weren't meeting you and Bob.
Elected.
Kevin, you, you're, you're speaking on non-public, we can't do that. So there's a lot of things that have transpired over passports. And I would state right now that I think both the passport and this board are all up to speed on the, what transpired and we need to leave it as non-public until we have a waiver that we can speak publicly about it. Because we don't want to put our town in libel by speaking of something that happened in a non-public session.
All I'm saying is that we weren't here. That's all I'm saying. And two newest people, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, um, alright, so as far as a public vote, if there's a public vote at a meeting, can I ask you guys how you voted and why you voted that way? Am I allowed to do that? Because it's on TV, it's televised, you can get the minute meetings. It'll actually say. For those that voted no on June 1st at 4 o'clock, I'd like to know why they voted no. Of course. If they choose to answer. If, if you guys are willing to say.
I did not agree with the procedure. That was, that I knew about and followed. I felt it was wrong. That's how I strongly feel to this day. Okay, just because you saw some, something on the news or something like that. Come in the next day and say, you're out of here. No, okay? I just don't feel that's right. That's why I voted no, and I don't agree with this. But see, I can't say the whole thing. I don't agree with the record, okay? I'll let, I'll let it go at that, okay?
Thank you.
I just didn't feel comfortable voting for it because I felt there were still some unanswered questions. And I was holding out hope that maybe we could. Brush this all aside and allow Jack to finish his term out. That was my goal.
Okay.
And I voted regrettably yes, only because I was allowing him to resign his position, go on with his life. Was not the outcome I wanted either from the whole entire.
Okay, and can I assume that their absence?
Has nothing to do with it.
No, 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 no.
I'm just saying planned vacation.
That's not what I meant at all. Are they, because I'm asking this question to all of you, are they, can I get an answer from them as well on that?
If you'd like to reach out directly to both of them, you can email them on column.
Okay.
They're both, I know readily will answer their phones in response.
Okay.
So you could definitely ask them.
Okay, thank you. That cuts out a lot of my questions. I am gonna start a Kevin and Jack deserve a plaque fund.
Sure.
So publicly, if you guys want to reach out, I would love to get these guys the plaque that they deserve after so many years of service to the town.
I believe you received one, right Kevin? Yes, I believe Kevin.
Yeah, I did.
We need you another one then. I would like to get one for Jack, so if any of you guys would like to donate, please look it up.
Let us know. Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Rich LaSalle's. I live at two thirty-six Charles Bancroft Highway. I've been involved here in town for many years. In many different capacities. For the last couple of years, I've been very alarmed of what's been happening with respect to personnel here in the town. And I, I'm, I don't know. What's causing the issues that we're having? I don't know who's pulling the strings. But I will say this much. That I hear from a lot of people in town in various different capacities. And I've never heard so many negative comments about just generally what's happening here at the town hall. Litchfield is a sleepy little town. But I think you'll find that people are waking up. And there are people who have no personal interest whatsoever in what happens. But they have a deep love for Litchfield. And goodness knows, I have enough on my plate, I don't need anything else. There's only one thing that would get me involved is my love of the town. And like I say, I don't know who's pulling the strings, I don't know what's happening. But I'm very alarmed of the whole situation with respect to personnel over the last couple of years. And I don't have any questions, I just want to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, would you like your walker? Would you like your walker? Okay.
If I fall over, just let go.
Oh, no, we're not letting go of that chair that you pocket.
I've been in town since nineteen fifty. And when I moved here in nineteen fifty, it was three hundred and thirty-five people. And Dave Campbell came to the house to welcome us because we were building it, my first husband and I. And he said, wow, now we have three hundred and thirty-nine. And I said, what do you mean? And he said, well, you, your husband and your two kids. I said, oh, that's great. But I love Litchfield, and I have never, in all the time I've been here, seen all the friction that's been going on. I can't believe it. And I said, wow, there's something wrong. So number one, I'd like to know, has you given him a written evaluation every like six months or once a year? He's been on for eleven years. He has gotten a writ, he has gotten a written evaluation?
He's received two.
He has gotten a copy of the written evaluation?
Yes. We just started performance review.
I'm sorry, say it louder, Troy.
The town just started performance reviews two years ago.
Yeah. So he's gotten a written evaluation, you're telling me?
Once a year, we sat down, we did an evaluation.
Well, I can't believe that you would give him a written evaluation or anybody a written evaluation, Kevin, even if it was me that was up there. And not telling me what I've done wrong, because I love Litchfield and I'm going to want it to be, and I'm going to live here until I die. So you can't get rid of me, and I'm ninety-one. But you know what, I do, I love it. And I can't imagine, and all the time, I was a selectman for twenty-five years, I never, never heard of this. And all the time I was selectman, we never actually fired one person. And that was twenty-five years. And here, you're making it miserable enough so that you give them an alternative. Either you resign or you're going to be fired, take your choice. Now, what would you do if somebody said that to you about your job, or your job, or your job, or your job? What would you do? Wouldn't you feel pretty guilty or funny or question why, why? I really would. I mean, I'm a very honest person, I'm a very frugal person, you can ask Troy, he'll admit that. But anyway, you know what? We don't have to have everything all at one time, but we do have to have harmony. We can't pull like this all the time criticizing every single thing. That's not Litchfield. I don't know what it is that's doing it. It must be something in the water or something.
PFOA.
What?
PFOAs.
Oh, is that it? I don't know, but I'm very disappointed. And I would like to have both Kevin, who got kind of pushed out. Ah, of course he resigned, but hey, maybe I'd resign if I had as much harassment as they had to put up with. Ah, Jack, I'd like to hear both of them, and I'd like to see them in front of the selectmen. And I'm really kind of concerned, where are the other two selectmen? I was a selectman for twenty-five years and I missed one meeting. And that shows your dedication. Now, you know, do you think anybody's running away because they're afraid to face what's going to happen?
I would hope not.
Troy, do you know that? You don't think that's true? How many times have those two people missed meetings before?
A few.
They have?
Travel for business, travel for business, I believe. Summer vacation, not, not, and saw frequently. You know, I know I've missed a couple because of business travel.
I can't imagine, that's not dedication, because we used to meet every single week. And I think you need to meet every week if you're going to do it and do a good job. You're voted by the people to represent the town. And when you do things like Kevin's and Jack's, that's not representing the town, that's representing your three selectmen that voted against him. And ousted him. That's not fair. And I'd like to know why you have to. Why you have to do that, very unfair. I'm a very fair person, but I, I just can't, it breaks my heart, it's upset me so, that I haven't even slept for three nights hardly. And everybody said, why do you have to worry, you're not involved. But you know what, this is Litchfield, and I love Litchfield, and I've been here for over sixty years, and I'm not going to change. I just can't believe there's so many good people in this town that. The leaders of the town who should be super duper set an example for the town. You can't bow the town down all the time, you gotta build it up. I, I really am upset. Well, you voted for against, voted to have both of those let go?
Nobody knows what my vote was.
Why?
No one knows what my vote was. The only vote that I had publicly was to accept the resignation on Monday, on Saturday, I'm sorry. There have, there were no other votes publicly at that time.
But how come you could do that? Didn't you feel that it was your responsibility and the?
I felt it was my responsibility to allow him to resign and go on with what he was. It was already done, his resignation was already there. I regrettably accepted his resignation. Is how I did it. It was not, that day was not a resignation for termin, a motion for termination or anything, it was, will you accept his resignation? And that's why I voted the way I did.
I'll tell you. If I was, if I was on the board and you can talk to anybody in town that was on, I went to bat for Chief O'Brien, I even went to court for him. And people say, you went, how would you do there? Yes, I dare. If I think something is right, you've got to prove to me that it's wrong. And that's the same with voting in a budget. I would say, no, I, I don't, I'm voting no, and I'd tell them before we voted, and I'll tell you the reason why I'm voting is, and I'd tell them. Because we can't have everything all at once. It's a small town, and of course it's getting bigger, much bigger than three hundred and thirty-nine. But that doesn't make it, even though you're big, you don't have to be not as good as we used to be. And I think that people need to realize, we can't have everything at once. I don't have everything at once, and I could have money enough, I guess, to spend foolishly and do it. But I like to buy things for the town or the school kids or whatever, I like to do that. But I mean, I just can't see. Oh, boy. I'd give my heart and soul to have those two guys have a, a fair hearing and have the people there and all. But I would, I don't, I'm going to say, you probably wouldn't give, allow us to read their evaluations, would you? Troy?
As Chairman Weber said, if there was.
I'm sorry, say it louder.
If there was a release signed by that individual.
Yeah.
Released all the personnel records.
Yeah.
And our legal counsel reviews it and determines that it's acceptable.
Yeah.
As Chairman Weber said, we, we would entertain that.
We, we, we want to be very open with the town, there are just times.
Well, you haven't been, I'll tell you. No, don't forget that.
Fair statement, but I understand where you're coming from. I really do. And I value your input and I value everything you've done for the town over the years.
I don't care what I've done, but I like to be honest and I like to be fair and give people the benefit of the doubt unless I'm sure that it's wrong. And if it's wrong, I don't care, if it's my own kids, it's wrong.
Everyone sitting up here feels exactly the same way.
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't believe it. So what will, who will my next person be that going to try to let go? I heard, I'm not saying it's true, but they requested the fire, the police chief resign. And then there was some controversy talk, well, maybe they'd let him stay on to the end of March election, which is the second Tuesday. Is that true?
Chief O'Brien in his last contract gave us a completion date of March of next year. That's why earlier this evening, we were talking about what it will be the procedure to hire a new police chief. And we all agreed and made a motion this evening that we're going to try to promote from within. Chief O'Brien is, he wants to resign March of twenty twenty.
March retire, retiring.
Retirement, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's retiring everything that's in his con, last contract we did with them, he's very happy about it. He's actually going to help us with the process of interviewing for the next police chief. So he's, he's very proud of the department that he has built, and he's very happy that hopefully somebody within will take over.
So who will be next? Now, got two, a boy, a two men.
Absolutely nobody. I, our employees are the most valuable thing we have in this town. And I truly believe that.
I heard there's something in the group, grateful, and that it's a good possibility they're pushing another person. But boy, I don't know who it is for sure. And if it was me, I wouldn't retire for you guys, I wouldn't give you the satisfaction, I would fight it.
I know of no one. Bob, do you know that? No, Kevin? No? No.
Well, might be just rumors, but I'll tell you, the rumors are not good in Litchfield. Not just the police department, the police department, I haven't heard any complaints. Well, since I got off, and I didn't hear very few before then, but I've been, I've been on since, is that two thousand?
Two years ago, wasn't it?
Eleven? Two thousand and eleven, Will died in two thousand and ten.
Okay.
And I gave up and that.
Okay.
I resigned, I didn't retire.
Correct.
I just resigned because I didn't feel I could get around, I don't drive and so forth, so it's a handicap, it really is. But I just, it bothers me so to think what's. You don't hear many people say, Pat, I just love this town. I'd say, really, that's great, I'm glad you do, because I do too. And they say, I can't believe what all these rumors are going around and the paper, the thumbs up and thumbs down and all. And I'd say, well, you know what? If you're not happy with something, you go and you tell them right to their face, you don't have to be afraid of them, they're just as human beings we are. And so tell them, hey, that's not fair, I don't think it's fair. And I just wish that you'd change your mind and reconsider both of them, I don't, I just can't believe.
I will say, Steve, I will say this.
What?
I will say this, Pat, after all these years, I, I've been in town all my life, I'm about two years younger than you, okay?
Oh, no, you're a lot younger than that. I'm ninety-one.
I was, when you moved in, I was just a dream, okay?
That dream didn't work out.
Yeah, we know, you moved in too. I noticed of all the years that we've had elections, this is the most people I see run. In one year, here. That tells you something right there, Pat, the people are not happy. Okay, I ran because I was not happy of the hidden stuff, and we're going to be more open. Even though council sometimes doesn't like it. You know, it will happen. Okay?
You better stick to your guns, don't back down, don't be afraid, even if it's just one vote. Hey, one vote is enough to make some of the, and tell them the why you're not happy with it. I always did that, I never just said, oh, I don't like that, I always said, why I don't like it? And that's important. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
I got it ready.
I can do it, I think.
Thank you.
What happened to your motorcycle, Pat?
Yeah, I don't care. I can run out in a hurry.
You have a horn for that?
David Cook, eighteen Cutler Road, have a few things I want to give it on, is why was Jack asked to resign in the first place?
Say it loud, Dave, Pat, hi, you.
I'm asking, why was Pat asked to resign in the first place, not Pat? We know why, we asked you to resign. Jack, why was he?
He was not asked to resign.
Huh?
He was not asked to resign.
Well, I understand he was either asked to resign or be fired.
Once again, it's a personnel matter that we can't speak about until we have a release.
Until what?
Until if there's ever a release, we cannot speak about the personnel matters, for the privacy of the employee.
His, his report for the work he did for the last two years, was that feasible?
We cannot discuss personnel issues in public.
So what do you mean?
We cannot discuss personnel issues in public.
So what you're telling us, you asked them to resign or be fired, but you can't tell us why?
We can't discuss the matter, it's a personnel issue. It's not because we don't want to, we cannot.
How do we, how do we get to the point to get an answer?
It was not, it was never asked to resign.
It was never asked to resign.
What do we have to do to get an answer to that? Sometime, somewhere. He is asking.
You'd have to release the records and we could have a public meeting, which I'd be all for that.
I agree.
If, if, if Jack is willing, yeah, I think put everything on the table.
Well, could we set up a public meeting so we can have it all put out?
It's up to Jack, if Jack, if Jack is willing, absolutely. It's up to Jack. If Jack, if Jack is willing, absolutely. Absolutely.
Have we, have we hired a new road agent yet?
We have not.
Okay. Okay. The other thing I really came down here for tonight was, for the last six or seven years, I've been trying to get the place up in Bixby cleaned up. It's full of old cars. You probably, Mr. Larry probably doesn't know why I've been here. And I've been talking to Kevin for a few years on it. I talked to the other administrator about getting it cleaned up. I've been to the administrator here, what, twice, three times? I've been down to the board here three times. And there's cars up there, six or seven cars up there. Been there for ten, fifteen years. I don't know how long now. They gotta be leaking oil. That's all wet around there.
Troy, do you have an?
The house is condemned. Kids are going in there. I was down here, had all kinds of promises that would be cleaned up.
Yep.
I came down here last September, October and place, after all that time, the place is still the same. What's being done with it?
Do you have an update, Troy?
Yes, and I think I've told you, Mr. Campbell, that unfortunately, for these past four or five years, there was no enforcement action, action that was taken. There was no documentation. So the selectmen got to a certain point when you were last here, where they asked me to take that, this work over. I was just in district court last week, in Superior Court, the week prior. So we've come at, we filed a law case for the junkyard and a separate one for the dilapidated building. We have a deadline of securing the building of July thirty-first. That's the court order. And the junkyard issue is supposed to, we haven't received that order yet, but that's, we're told that it will be July thirty-first. So we're trying to pull both issues in on that, that deadline.
So now what happens then? You go clean it up?
My guess, no. My, we'd have to wait and see if, if the property owner takes any action. If he chooses not to take action, then we continue our court battle. And probably wouldn't be able to get into court again till November. At some point in time, the court will give us authority to take action. But you know, it's a long process. If it had, like I told you, I mean, if it had started three, four years ago, this would be resolved by now.
Then you said something wrong, sir.
Say it loud, Kevin, please.
I wanna say it real loud. Two years ago, two and a half years ago, I did stop procedures. I've been talking to them. I came to the board. That night, the board wanted me to tell them why I can't do anything. The gentleman has issues, mental issues. I'm gonna say it now. We worked on the outside to get somebody in here. The documentation in the file, the building permit was issued for the demo of that building and also a correction of it. He backed out that last day. Okay? And furthermore, my life changed. I am not here anymore from that point on. That documentation is in there. The communication is in there. So I wanna make it clear. It was misinformed to you that nothing's been done for four to five years. The building itself, four years ago, five years ago, was fit. The floor caved in of the addition on the family room. The roof came down a snowstorm two and a half years later. The vehicles were all there prior to me even coming to town. He added one more since then, his pickup truck. Why? He can't drive. All I'm saying, those are the facts. And he backed out and then my time here changed. Okay? I just let you know, and we had a lot of people trying to help him. Okay? And Rich LaSella, even went with me to sit down with him and talk to him about it, trying to get the VA and stuff around. Okay? And some gentleman in the back as well. We tried everything. Right now, we're at a point where we have to deal with this this way. Last thing I do is court. Last thing. In my forty years of doing this, court is the worst place you can go for something like this. This takes longer. But the guy is not right. Okay? That's all I got to say, David.
Yeah, but when I, when I, when I approached you, what, six years ago?
It wasn't even six years ago.
Okay. Yeah, it was quite a while ago.
Right. The building was still-
Let's say five years ago. I was just interested in getting the cars out of there.
Yep.
Okay? And you kept promising me, you know, I'll, I'll take care of it, I'll take care of it. And at one time, you came to my house and said, by the time you come back from California, those cars will be gone.
He had a deal and he backed out again. He's not, that's why when I came to the board, there's issues. There's still gonna be some. Okay? I don't think. It's an ongoing. He has issues. I can say that. Okay? Thank you, David.
Is he still alive?
Yes, he is. He walks there every day.
Looks like we're at the point now, we're making headway. It's just gonna take some-
Okay? We're getting there.
Now we just have to wait for the court to-
That's correct.
It's still gonna be a process, but we're a lot further ahead than we were back when you were talking to the previous inspector and previous town administrator.
Okay. And we're gonna set up a meeting to talk about Jack's?
That's up to him. That's up to him. Yep.
You can come into my office and I can give you the, the public records that we have. You know, the documents that I have, the, the court records, if you wanna copy them, you can come in.
You mean for the junkyard?
For the junkyard, yes.
Not it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Where's Leon?
Is there any other important?
Where's Leon? You two are always together.
Hello, Linda Peoples, two oh five. I'm stepping out of my, my zone, but I got a lot to say. This town, I don't know what's going on. There's a lot of angry people out here and what they-
You get her a horn?
I think what they started off with Kevin was wrong. They nitpicked him on every little thing. He was late. If he did something on his own to help somebody out, he got in trouble for that. To me, that is community service and that's what this town is all about. I know, I do enough myself. Okay? And now they turn to Jack and what they did to him was wrong. They were nitpicking him for a long time. It got so bad that they had him doing trash. And from what I understand, he was gonna resign in, in two thousand twenty. March of two thousand twenty, he was gonna resign. But you know, they kept giving it to him, jabbing at him and he just couldn't take it anymore. He went to work. He was met up there. He was told to give me the keys, cell phone and truck. And they left him there to find a way home and to walk. To me, that is wrong. And I just wanna know what's going on with this town. And I probably shouldn't say it, but there's certain people on this board that if you have a vendetta against somebody, then they shouldn't be on the board. It should be a, a, a board that has consideration for people and what's best for the people in this town and for this town. If you have a vendetta against a certain person, you don't belong on the board. So that's all I got to say about this. My feeling is those two guys were treated wrong. And another question I have is, I live across from Parker Park. That, who's gonna cut that grass? It's up to your knees. To me, it's, it's, it's embarrassing for the town because it gets a lot of people over to travel. And nobody's cut it yet. I would see Jack and I'll say, Jack, when are you coming to cut the grass? And he would be there the next day doing it. So I don't know who's gonna cut it, but it needs to get on a schedule every week to get cut. And the whole thing cut, not just half, not just a little, but the whole thing.
I agree.
Because, you know-
I'll do my part.
Kevin used to cut the grass down along the side of the road. He used to do that and then Jack would do it. You know, there was a couple of kids that did it, but they didn't do a very good job. I mean, my grandson could do better, but you know-
My mom was getting older.
It needs, it needs to be, it needs to be done on a regular basis.
Troy, who's responsible for conservation grass?
Conservation grass is no one. The highway department has always done it.
Always do it? Doesn't fall within like, you know, TLC doing rec and all the other stuff?
They only do the rec.
Okay, thank you.
I know Jack used to do it.
Jack used to do it. Or me. Or you. No one.
I don't know. My husband was gonna cut it and I said, no, you're not. So.
Tomorrow morning.
So that's all I got to say. I think these people, both these men were, were just cut short of what they did. They, they did so much for this town. And the way they were treated was just so wrong. It's not, it's not human, you know?
Thank you.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, Joe Cabral, Brickyard Drive. Pat, that good enough? Can you hear me? Joe Cabral, Brickyard Drive, is that good? That's good. I think you people on this board, three years in you, have woken up an awful giant in this town from two people that you literally have no respect for as far as I'm concerned. Okay? None. You don't bring them in and talk with them to try to save the job like he had mentioned? Oh no, to hell with it. You've already made up your minds. Oh yeah, she did. Come on, you did a three vote.
Where is this three to two vote? I'd like to-
It was on the TV to accept the thing to that, to me. And the other thing is-
Resignation had already happened at that time.
Here's the thing that I don't understand, and this is so stupid to me. When I resigned from a company, I had to bring paperwork in and do it. When do you take it out of a frigging newspaper and call that a resignation? When? No corporation does that. Only the stupid town of Little Shield does it. And it's wrong. Okay? It is damn wrong. And if I was Jack, I would fucking sue you for this meeting. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Getting pissed. I know. Dad, I'm sorry. I won't do it again. As far as Bixby, I gotta bring this up because I was the one involved with it with my neighbor Tracy. Because Kevin asked us to see if you can go talk with the poor guy, cause we were running around doing other stuff at the time. The guy has mental problems. Okay? And he's been in and out of the VA like crazy. I had a hard time getting a hold of him. And when I did, he just came in from an eye operation. He couldn't even see. But he talked to me. From there, I went to LaSella's and talked to him. People have tried to help him, but the guy has mental problems. But you guys are gonna just jump all over it real quick. Nobody, is nobody now to get down to talk to him? Cause we don't have a building. Wait a minute, you could get down and talk to him.
I just had a conversation with him.
Okay.
Half an hour conversation. We had a great, great conversation.
That's what I want. That's what you need to do. Okay? But let's get away from that one now. And here's what I'm gonna go. Pat, you're gonna like this.
Okay, I'm hearing. I'm not.
First of all, I would like to thank Pat Jewitt for putting an article in the Hudson Litchfield News. Pat is well-respected citizen in our community and if Pat has something to say, you should all pay close attention. And she's done it. Okay? Another thing I have, I would like to express my concern in the handling of our road agent. Okay? Who authorized the town administrator to be at the bond at seven AM on Friday to put Jack on administrative leave? You're not gonna answer it. Who? Who? Who authorized it? Cause you guys gotta give him the direction to go to, or is he running the frigging town?
And once again, it's a personnel matter. We cannot discuss it.
No, I'm asking, who authorized it? That's not personal. I'm not asking about Jack's record. Who authorized it to, to have him go down? Somebody authorized it.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
I authorized him to go down and talk to Jack about the article that was placed in the paper the night before. Excuse me? It was very late at night and we did have a lot of conversations, text mails going back and forth.
There was a lot of phone calls.
There was a lot of phone calls. This was not done on a blind, a whim or anything.
I personally called each selectman at nine o'clock at night and told them that we've learned that Jack has submitted his resignation in the newspaper.
Again, through the newspaper. That is-
So, so we decided, the best way to handle this is that you put the employee on paid administrative leave until we figure out what's going on. Because, okay. Because you don't know-
You're terminating them. How are you gonna-
Paid administrative leave is when there's allegations made, when there's any concern of management, you place an employee on paid administrative leave till you have an opportunity to collect the facts. Because I don't know if Jack wrote that resignation letter.
You don't know who did. Anybody could have put that in the paper.
So we decided, put him on paid administrative leave until we figure, but when I had my conversation with Jack, he threw his, you know, the resignation letter at me. I offered him a ride home.
Did he do that?
I offered to have his assistant drive him home.
Did he offer you that at seven in the morning is what I'm asking. When did he?
About seven fifteen, seven twenty in the morning.
Want my opinion? That's the guy that's running the frigging town, not these guys. Right there. That's your problem. People didn't wanna let him go. Tom.
It's more than one problem.
There is.
Okay, now the other-
Not one, but he's not here.
I think you need to, if you know you have a meeting, you don't bother. You take your vacation around another day or you miss a meeting and come. If something else is important, this is, I would've been here if I had to crawl. That's what you call dedication. And the other thing is not dedication, that's for sure.
Hi, my name's Nicole Forty. I'm at eighty-five Page Road. I have one comment that's just as a member of the public. It's my understanding as far as what happens with the minutes of non-public sessions, that basically there has to be a vote to seal them.
Correct.
And then they remain sealed until you guys, if you do decide to unseal them.
This is duration, they could be permanently, they could be twelve months, two months, two weeks, whatever motion is for it.
So it's sort of just a question or a recommendation, wondering if it is the policy of the board of selectmen to periodically go through those sealed minutes to see if any of them should become unsealed, if the reason that they were sealed has expired.
The one year I've been on board, I don't know that we've ever looked at them.
There's, um, it's, you can do that. The board can actually go through, you know, once every three years, go through them and decide to release them.
So I would just say as, as a public member, as a taxpayer and, you know, basically I know it's not required by the law, but that, you know, basically it's put forth that it's good practice to periodically go through them and see if, just under the right to know law and wanting to be transparent. And there's been comments about wanting to be more open, right? So I just wanted to kind of put that forth.
Question for Troy. Since Steve, you're new still. This is your first year being burned. Welcome. Over the years, when you got a personnel thing, I noticed there's one vote that we had here. We said, we called, we called before a year. Why, and we voted, but why was the purpose of a year? Is that, can you explain that? And not in general?
I think sometimes when the board votes to seal for a one-year period, there's a personnel matter that they, I don't make the motion, I don't vote.
I understand.
So I, I'm assuming that the board in general is assuming that the issue is gonna be resolved by then. It, it doesn't need to be withheld from the public.
Could the board bring those back up and open them up or do that over, like, like was just asked over a period of time? Let's say we go max six months or three months or the type of issue it may be.
I mean, I think what we could do is we could go back year, two years, whatever duration you wanna do and say, okay, which one of those minutes that were sealed can now be unsealed.
Let's look at that. I think it's a good question.
Yeah, cause I've never really thought of that.
I never thought of that neither. I like that one. Don't stay off the sidewalk. She pulled up today and she found out her cow was that much too low. Poor girl.
But it, it kinda leads into just the other comment that I have. So I am a member of the Budget Committee. And as part of that, I am always looking for opportunities, trainings, ways to get- And as part of that, I am always looking for opportunities, trainings, ways to get more information, get more involved. So kind of how I had learned about this whole sealing, the minutes unsealing thing was the New Hampshire Municipal Association put on a training over the weekend for elected officials.
It's a good one. The one for the Budget Committee.
On June twenty-seventh. Yeah, so on June twenty-seventh at seven PM, representatives from the New Hampshire Municipal Association are going to be here in this room, putting on a training. Everyone is invited, the public's invited. Everybody that wants to come out, there's a lot of passion, there's a lot of people who care about this town. And I think it would be great that people are informed and whether you can make it in person, watch it on YouTube. I really just want, want to see a good, a good showing. I think that would be amazing.
It is, it's a fantastic training.
They're really, really well-informed and, you know, I know it seems like there's a lot of people have very strong emotions, strong opinions. And if you combine that with the knowledge of the law and how things work, that's how things change.
You got it.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go forward. Go forward.
Is there any other comment?
I've got a quick follow-up. Sorry. One Colby Road, I just had a couple of follow-up questions after listening to some of the others. If Jack has to do a file release, is it conditional on opening the entire file? Because that sounds, that's the way that it was worded and I just want to make sure that that's not the case. Like he could say, okay, we can release my reviews.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a open or closed situation.
I mean, and based off of what gets released is what could the content of the discussion be?
Okay.
I think that's what we'd.
But it is possible. If he just said, I want to see my, I want to see my two reviews go public, but nothing else.
Then the only thing we'd be able to talk about would be those two reviews.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm just, I was a little confused with the way that you said you gave Mr. Brown the approval to go down on Friday morning.
Well, I was.
Let me follow up the question. Hold on. I guess, I guess my good, my, my real question is if you gave him the permission to go down and talk to Jack about his resignation letter.
Correct.
Did, did Mr. Brown make the decision to put him on administrative leave or is that something that you guys all went through as a?
That evening, we all spoke at different times, back and forth. And at the conclusion of it, it was to place on administrative leave just to figure out what's going on, who posted the article, what happened. An email went out to the whole entire board that that was the action that was going to happen.
So is, I'm a little unfamiliar with the way that our structure is here. Is Mr. Brown the road agent's boss?
He is his direct day-to-day manager.
Supervisor?
Supervisor. As the town administrator, he administrates the daily tasks of the Board of Selectmen. So the daily tasks would go back to him. So all the department heads, except for probably police, fire, and Terry, Town Clerk, all the rest of them report back into the town administrator.
That doesn't make a lot of sense. Do you have, what is your background?
I have twenty-five years of experience in municipal government, all as a town administrator. I have a bachelor's degree in public administration that I earned from University of Mayan Oriental.
Do you have a background in, in state road maintenance or trash pickup or anything like that? Like, I guess I'm asking what qualifies you to be somebody's supervisor if you don't? If you're not attached.
I think it's the years, years of experience I've had as a town administrator. I've been involved in all types of municipal projects, road projects. Anything you can imagine with police departments, fire departments, highway departments, solid waste facilities.
Okay.
Capital improving, budgeting, development.
Just a, a kind of, I guess, a process question. What is your, what is your purpose here at the Selectmen's meeting? Like, how come you're here? Just because you're the administrator or are you required to be?
Because I am, at one, at some point in time, the town decided that the workload for the Board of Selectmen was too much and they needed to have a day-to-day professional person.
Right, but do you take part in votes and that kind of thing?
No, no, no. Is that what you're asking?
So if you were a town manager, you'd have voting rights. As a town administrator, he does not. So basically, he handles day-to-day. He'll go and meet with the lawyers when St. Albans stuff was going on. He'll help find grants. He'll help on the day-to-day process of policies, procedures, things that we, having regular jobs, can't get to on a daily basis. So he helps keep the town running from that standpoint.
So part of, part of, I mean, I respect, I'm just asking questions. Part of your position here is personnel issues?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
Steve, can I ask a question?
Of course.
You have to sit in the chair.
I was talking before you were.
Thank you. I, I just.
For the record.
I'm Terry Brandon, the Town Clerk.
Thank you.
Tax collector, one seventy-five Charles Bancroft Highway. My question is, where we have, I have employees that work in my office.
Yes.
Is it a new policy that the way we're handling these things, you know, say one of my employees comes to me and says, I'm giving my two weeks' notice. Do I meet them at the door and is this a new policy?
No, not at all.
I, I just don't understand. I did have someone decide to retire and she told me she was retiring on June first. It was a happy thing that she was retiring. We made it a happy thing. We had a retirement party. We let her finish out her time. We let her finish out her day. Why didn't we let that happen in the other two cases? I'm just wondering if it's a policy.
If this board had their desire, we would have done that. I believe from my viewpoint, and the other two can speak also, that the letter was affected, based off what we saw in the newspaper, the letter was affected the next day. There was no two weeks' notice or anything and.
There was no effective date on it.
No date on it.
I believe it said June fir-, I, I could be wrong, but the impression was June first. When Troy went down to discuss about it, it came back that the letter said June first.
I think the big difference here is that.
I would have loved, and everyone here would have loved two more weeks.
And I think that's why everybody is so upset because we're not letting these people say, okay, I'm going to retire on this date and let them finish out their time. We're, we're saying, what do you mean you're going to retire? Get out.
And I think the difference here is I love two weeks because with two weeks, you can do a lot of good things. You can have a lot of wonderful discussions.
Exactly.
When it's happening the next day, we as a town, we as an organization, and we have to understand what is going on. So I don't think anyone sitting here wanted it to be the outcome that it was.
No, and, and I think that the reason why it was like that is because when Kevin said he was going to retire, they met him at his door. I was here. And they had somebody watch over him while he was cleaning out his office. He's been a resident.
And I fully agree.
And I just don't, I, this, this board's never done that.
The board is at this time. I know that I'm a common thread of two of them.
Right.
But things start before you become a member of this board, as Pat, I think, can say.
Yeah.
There's things in motion when you come on. Correct. But there are things that are in motion and you learn very quickly. The first year you're in, there's a lot of motion going that you really can't slow down.
Right. I get that.
Nikki, if she was at the class, the person says, the first year you get in there, there's so much going on, just get on board and try to stop maneuvering it.
And I've heard many times where, you know, someone runs for selectman, the first thing they say to him is, you know what? You say nothing the first year.
And that's.
You say nothing and, and that's not.
I've heard the same thing.
I'm sure you did.
And you, and, and you're trying to take your years of experience you have, you're trying to change this big vessel that takes time to change.
Right.
And the outcome that happened with Jack was not the outcome that was desired whatsoever. I know that from the bottom of my heart.
I just, like I said, as a department head also, I want to make sure that this is not a new policy that it just seems like.
I agree. Our employees are the most valuable thing we have. I wake up every morning and I have three things. Believe in people, value people, and I conditionally love people. And that's how I try to start my day and proceed my day all the way through. So when things like this happen, it, it generally bothers me. Like Pat said, she doesn't sleep. You know, I don't sleep either. I don't think Bob sleeps. I don't think Kevin sleeps.
I don't sleep.
Yeah, and you don't sleep. I mean, it's.
But that's one thing that's been bothering me as well.
Correct.
Exactly.
I agree.
It just seems like this is, and I think that's what people are seeing is now we meet him at the door, even though they're residents, even though they're taxpayers, we're meeting him at the door and saying, in, instead of sitting down with him.
Correct.
And saying, okay, what's the situation? What's going on here? You know?
Yes.
I still think that that was handled incorrectly. And I think that he should have had the chance to say, okay, this, because I know that he met with him, that he went to Troy and he met with him and he asked him a specific question, which was non-public. And his answer was what it was, which ended up being what it was.
Everything released, you will understand there was a lot more to that discussion and a lot more compassion within that discussion.
Right. And like you said, it's, like you said, it was a closed and, you know, because I know I've talked to board members and I know that people are upset about, some of the people are upset about what the situation was.
There was a lot more compassion to it, but that being a personnel matter, and we, and I hate having to say that, but that is the truth, that we legally can't. But I think a lot of people will have a different viewpoint if they were to know everything.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a new policy and the whole thing, so, thank you.
Can I have one follow-up question?
Of course.
I'm just a little bit confused about the timeline. So somebody discovered that the Hudson Litchfield News had a letter that the road agent was going to resign as of the next day.
Correct.
Is that correct? And Selectmen, Town Manager became aware of that. Is that right? The town administrator was, became aware of that. And then there was discussions over the phone and emails going back and forth.
There were, there were no, a quorum was never pulled together if that was, is your.
So there was no official meeting?
There was no official meeting. It was Troy calling individual, individual, individual people.
Dude, did Selectmen talk to each other about this?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, because.
Yeah, but I spoke to Jack as well.
Who was the chairman of the Board of Selectmen?
I am the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
At the time.
At the time of this, yes. As of March, I became the Board's.
You didn't feel compelled based upon an article in the paper that one of your department heads was going to resign? You didn't feel compelled to go talk to that person personally?
I did not personally, but I, Bob did speak on our behalf. Bob had a very much closer relationship than I had with Jack. I've only yet to know Jack over the last month, I would say.
But as the chairman of the Board of.
No, I did not.
Okay. So there was an article in the paper. And then the town administrator went to talk to the road agent.
Correct.
At seven o'clock in the morning. And the end result of that meeting was an immediate resignation on the part of the road agent.
Correct. I believe his letter stated, I don't have in front of me, was he was resigning as of five PM that day?
Five PM on what day?
Was that May thirty-first? Troy?
He was, it was going to be effective June, June first. He was going to finish his workday and retire effective June first.
Okay, did he finish his workday?
He did. I placed him on paid administrative.
Okay. Okay. All right, so that's, that's pretty important, I think, from a, from a legalistic standpoint. Did he finish off that day?
He was paid for that day, correct, yes. He was paid.
He didn't work, no.
He did not physically work, but he was paid and he didn't have to use urine time. He didn't have to use vacation time or anything. He was paid for that day.
I, I just find it rather incredulous here that there was an article in the paper. And based upon that, there was a lot of conversation going back and forth. And the town administrator shows up at seven in the morning. And based upon that, he's put on paid administrative leave. A gentleman who is, who from the casual observer standpoint, has given yeoman's work to the town. I just, I just feel that things were not handled properly.
I don't think it's just one or two people that have been up. I think a lot of people have been up.
Not a real game. We gotta sit down and discuss.
Nothing. Let them go. They've gone.
Just one more thing. If we. Pat, it's my turn. So if we have this special meeting, we will find out why Jack was asked to resign.
If he wants to release.
If he, if he, if he agrees with this, then we'll find out why the board asked him to resign.
He was never asked to resign.
He was told he was going to be terminated.
If, if he's going to be, he resigned because if he, he resigned because if he didn't resign, he was going to be fired. Okay, then will the board, we find out why you were going to fire him?
If he releases his records, we can talk about everything that transpired.
Exactly.
So if he releases a thing, we come to this meeting, we will find out if he was asked to resign. From what I understand, and I could be wrong, he was asked to be resigned or be fired.
He was never asked to resign.
Okay, and then he was, then he was asked to be fired?
Once again, it's a personnel issue. If we are able to talk about it, we will.
It's either a personnel question. Was he asked to be fired?
Under the oath of office I took, I cannot say it. It's violating an oath that was taken.
I'm not asking you why he was going to be fired. I'm just asking you, was he going to be fired?
I cannot answer the question.
I told Jack, really.
None of us legally can answer the question.
Why, why can't you? If you were going to fire somebody, why can't you say, answer, you were going to fire him? You're not, you're not saying why you were going to fire him. I'm only asking you, did you say you were going to fire him? Was he going to be fired?
We cannot answer that question. It could be nine steps that could have taken to get to that point if they weren't completed. We cannot answer the question. It's not that we don't want to, we cannot. The three people sitting here, I know for a fact, would love to answer every single question, but we cannot.
Unless Jack says okay. Unless Jack says okay. I'm pretty sure. You may get two pots to this one. In my case, I didn't have the.
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Is there any more public input? Seeing now, now closed public input. It's, oh, excuse me. Not, not closed yet.
Do you know what? I think half the problem is with Brent. You know, but I think Brent, oh, I can't say that.
No, no, I'm, no, I'm just saying.
The person's not here, but the person that's seen right over there. He's hiding. He's afraid to come. And that takes guts to come.
Please state your name and address.
Tracy Fato, eight Brickyard Drive. Tracy Fato, eight Brickyard Drive. My question is for Troy Brown. How many hours? I, I come in often during the week to bring an RSA ninety-one A or just to ask you questions. You're never here. What are your hours? Do you mind my asking?
Well, my regular hours are, I'm here from eight to four.
Eight to four, okay.
I'm a salary, salary employee, so I could be working at home sometimes at six o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night, responding to emails, talking to Selectmen. I can work on a Saturday. I can work on a Sunday.
What about your eight-hour days?
I may be at meetings during the day over at National Regional Plan Commission. I have other meetings I attend, so when you come and I'm not here, I could be out doing an inspection somewhere in town. I, I fill out a payroll every week. I document, I document every hour. It's a public document. If you want to review my, my payroll stubs, you can. All my time records are documented every hour that I work.
What does a town administrator do for inspections?
Well, currently, right now, for the last six months, I've been acting as code enforcement officer.
What are your, what are your?
I'm sorry, zoning, zoning administrator.
I have the table. What do you have?
No, no, I'm, I'm acting as zoning enforcement officer at this point in time.
Zone enforcement.
Zoning, so when you have a zoning complaint, someone says that the shed is, you know, not within the setback.
What's your background? What's your background on that?
Well, I was certified at one point in time when I was in the state of Maine. I used to actually be a town planner. I was building inspectors. What's that?
Do you have a CDL?
Do I have a CDL?
Oh, you don't need that?
No, I do not. It's not part of my job requirement.
Okay.
I can explain something that was recently done. I'm going to just get into the buildings department. Recently, the board changed the building department, as you well know. That's what happened to me. They made their decisions behind closed doors. Said it was a reputation questionable on that. Right now, the, this is how it's been split up, the building department. You got, they're interviewing this week for a building inspector whose job would just be building. That's it. So the question is, is it full-time or part-time? That's another question.
Just so it's clear that Kevin will be part of the interviewing process.
Yeah, and that's why I say it.
He will be in the interviewing process of the candidate.
Bob and I are going to be there because we have the construction background. I do have some experience in it for zoning as well. But the board, the past board had made a recommendation to split, to split it up because they wanted the fire department to be involved. I'm not agreeing to that, but it's already been done. That's next year's issue.
Is that going to cost us more money?
We don't know yet. Okay. But now Troy is now doing the zoning because he's the only one that really has some background. Because there's nothing over there that does. Part-time building inspector we have does have that same background, but they didn't assign it to him. A health officer is a fireman. That's all I can tell you. That's all, that's all I know. Has, as a wise move, I disagree, but it was a move that was done. Okay? Behind closed doors, I will say that. Okay? And that's about as far as I'm going. You're welcome. And Troy does have some zoning background. I will have to vouch for that. May not agree on everything. But I will vouch for it.
Still your input?
Okay.
For now.
No, just zoning.
Just zoning.
Just zoning.
Just zoning.
It's only, yeah.
John is doing it right now, part-time. He's a guy, John Gilchrist, he's a building inspector.
Troy Bane in New Hampshire. For, um, and are you still certified?
Fire guys.
No, I'm, I'm no longer certified.
No, seriously, this is not even a lot that Steve, this is serious.
The health inspector gets a stipend, right? Health enforcement?
Health inspector receives a stipend, I believe it's.
$1,300 a year.
$1,300 a year as a stipend.
That's it.
But he had a technique in here. See, I haven't had a high tech, right? I haven't gone crazy.
That, you can't ask me though in that way. It's just something. That's another discussion for the future, okay?
What is that going to be? Going to give us a time and a date, a date and a time?
It'd be another discussion for the future and that will come up as a date and time.
It's going to be published so we'll all know?
I'll even port it in the, the L and H the week before. About the night before.
I have another question. What did the board of selectmen, what's the frequency for the town meetings now?
Board of selectmen meet twice a month.
Twice a month?
Yes.
So now that summer's here, that hasn't changed?
Has not changed. We go all the way through. There are some other committees in town that will take the summer off.
Okay.
We always meet twice a month. The only time it may be a push is if there's a holiday on that Monday. Depending on what's on the agenda, we could have a meeting the following Monday or have it on Tuesday night, but we try to stay to the cadence of twice a month.
And Bobby, tonight, has asked that we start later instead of six, so people can get here. I'm in agreement because we, we, we all work. Okay? And if we meet, because the agendas are not going to be long, the budget season makes it a little different. Okay? Welcome to, it's hay season, same thing. Okay? You got to work a little longer, get over it. But you've got some time off in between, you know? That's going to happen. Oh, bed by twelve.
So.
All the information and once a month, I mean, twice a month. We used to meet every single week.
There's less going on.
I know.
It's a bigger town.
I mean, we knew we were on top.
It's a bigger town. I mean, there's. It's just, I mean, we went from 300 people to almost 9,000 people. There's a lot more.
Eight thousand something like, maybe 900, whatever.
Tracy, would you have some more input?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Troy, is there any, are you the boss of any town employees at Town Hall?
I, I'm manager of the day-to-day activities for the department heads. And then the staff underneath me in my department were the finance and the, the town receptionists.
Secretary.
Donna.
Daughter of the pack.
There's only three. There's only three depart, department heads. Okay? Now, there used to be five. But they voted those out. Okay? The other two.
Who were the three department heads? I'm sorry.
Police, fire, and town clerk.
And he would be the boss of the police, fire, and town clerk?
You have Dave Mellon, a solid waste, and you got, and you got Karen White in the finance department.
She's on, she, what? She's, she got, she got her, she's the, she's the department? She's, okay.
She's the finance director, yes.
Okay, that's four.
And Dave Mellon.
And Dave Mellon.
Solid waste.
That's supposed to be underneath the highway. It was for years.
Yep.
As it has since I've been here.
I know what you're saying. I know, I know. Okay.
I think I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
You can come back.
Do we have any more input this evening?
Come on, don't be afraid.
Being that it's 7:41, a closed public input. Thank you, everybody who inputted this evening. Where do we leave off? The approval of MS4 stormwater permit certificate. Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bring Lee in, okay? And I'll be happier. You too, David. Welcome back. That is a slogan.
Thank you, Patty Wells.
Thank you very much, guys.
We welcome everyone.
I'd rather see people here. It gets kind of boring. Even they agree in the corner.
Okay, MS4 permit, I, the MS4 permit, you know, I've been telling the board, I need to be working on some stuff and now I'm truly, really behind because I've been able to do anything. But I wanted to have the board vote to authorize me to be able to sign items like stormwater pollution prevention plans, inspection reports, the annual monitoring reports, training records. These are all the issues that the EPA is following as part of our permit and the discharging of our stormwater. So EPA is recommending that all the administrators that are, that are handling the MS4 permit, that the board of Selectmen, town councils authorize an individual to sign. So I just need, just need a, a, a vote on record.
Yeah, you can sign.
So if the EPA actually wanted to show me, show proof that I have the, the authority to sign.
Before you do that, oh, I like to see what you're signing. That's all. Especially when you get into inspections in the outside world. That's all I'm really concerned about. Okay? There's something that, you know, because we have a background. I've done storm, stormwater for almost 20, 20, 20 years.
Yeah.
Okay? In another town, I did it. They put me in charge of that crap. And, excuse me. But I just got, you've got to be careful about a few things on it as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then I'll make a motion to accept the, I'll read the, I'll read it so it's proper and. Move to authorize the town administrator position to review and approve stormwater pollution prevention plans, inspection reports, annual monitoring reports, trading reports, and other information as required by the MS4 permit.
We have a motion by Mr. Larry. Second by Mr. Weber. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nope. I wanted to see him, I said.
Could we amend the motion, please, that, for the inspection reports that Selectman Lynch will be able to see them prior to signature?
I make a motion to amend as said.
We have a motion by Mr. Larry.
Good motion.
Would you like to second it?
I can't. Yeah, go ahead. Yes, I will.
Second by Mr. Lynch. All of the favor?
Yeah.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries 300.
Just trying to open it up. I'm just trying to be open about it.
That's okay. Okay. Um, next is the Melonson Health contract.
Heath. Is it Heath or Hill?
Heath, I guess.
The Lanson Heath.
Heath contract.
See, this is our auditing firm. And so basically, this, this is a three-year contract, but the first year is already under contract. For some reason, they're saying the new accounting standards, they have to reference the first year, which is already under contract. So the, for 2018, 2019, the cost would be $20,500. And in 2020, it would go up $500. Again, the 18 is already, they've just finished, you know, the, the audit.
You started it budgeted and everything?
So there's no increase in 19, the $500 increase in 2020.
I'll make a motion. Don't accept it.
Motion by Mr. Lynch.
To just authorize the town administrator to sign the contract. Yeah.
Correct.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Larry. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries 300.
The reason why I did what I did, because that's his background. Welcome to the auditors. They're a lot of fun.
Next is the approval of the fire department weekend and holidays stipend. Mr. Brown.
All right. So this, this is actually a practice that's in place. But it's, but it's been omitted from the pay scale. So in our, in our wage scale, appendix A. But what, what we do is on weeknights after the full-timers go home, we always have an individual that will cover from 1,600 to 800 hours. And so they get a $20 stipend to be on call. And that is, they're supposed to be within 10 to 15 minute response time. If they get called out, any hours that they work, they get paid their hourly rate. On weeknights, that's weeknights, and then on week, weekend days and town holidays, it's $50 to cover the full day and then you're doing the whole night. So.
When did that come into play?
It's always, um, it's always been, we've been paying the, um, the on-call stipend for.
Since you've been here, right?
Yeah. So the only thing that's changed is, um, we've always done the weekend days, but the town holidays is the only new payment here. But, but that's, you know, on holidays, we have to have someone cover the stations. So I'm not sure.
How many holidays a year?
We have 10 paid holidays.
Was the increase in the budget?
It's already in the budget.
It's, yeah, it's already in the budget. The fire chief had placed it in the budget this year. So none of this is an impact to the budget. It's just.
Okay.
Having something on record.
Well, yeah, it should have been said before. Great.
So is he going to put this in his budget from going forward from now on?
It's all, it's already in the budget. It's just that this board's not, um, we, we just, it's not in appendix A of the, um, non-personnel.
So will we be voting on the stipend every year?
No.
Okay.
Not, unless it changed.
Unless it changes. Okay.
Yeah.
So in other words, we finally got us, it's, it's showing up.
Right.
Before, we didn't even know it showed up.
Now we'll show up in appendix A.
You wouldn't see it in appendix A of wages. There's a whole bunch of stipends and extra incentives that call firefighters are paid.
Okay, yeah.
These are, for whatever reason, not, I think they're just, it was a mistake. They're just left out.
All right.
But they're in the budget.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that we just knew it was there.
Yeah. Okay. That was my first question the other day when I heard it was budgeted and they're like, yeah.
Yeah. My budget committee's here tonight, so I'm happy.
Am I elected again?
Yes. You can read that.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to update appendix A wages of the personnel policy with on-call officers stipends as follows. Weeknights, 1,600 hours to 0,800 hours, $20. Weekend days and town holidays, $50.
We have a motion by Mr. Larry.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries 300.
I wonder where you get that fancy stuff to come up with.
I'll show you after the meeting.
Please do.
You'll have it every week after that.
This, this channel gets boring.
Kind of stagnant.
It's just the agenda.
Which channel are you watching?
Just the agenda channel.
Mine's terrible.
Next is a special meeting for a tour of the highway department. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'd like to see that one.
Yeah. So I'd like to see if the board would be interested in trying to coordinate a time that we could go down to the highway garage and have Kevin Brown give us a tour of the facility, all the equipment. Last Friday, I spent about two and a half hours with Kevin going through the facility. And there are so many things that, um, you know, I think you physically need to see. And as we start discussing things going forward and some real budget impacts, Kevin has some great ideas on, you know, where he'd like to go and the things that we need to replace. And I just think it'd be really beneficial for the board.
Being that it's going to be.
Be there and, and, and kind of, you know, see it.
Seeing that the feeling is we may have some budget impacts, would it make sense to invite the budget committee along with us? So they get a first sense. So when we start bringing these items to the budget committee, they'll physically know what we're talking about. They've seen it when we saw it and so forth.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea because I, you know, you, you sit down and look at a plow frame and the different types of plows we have and it just, everything, I just found it very educational.
Yeah, maintenance repair, if that part of budget has to go up, new equipment. I mean, I think it'd be great if the budget committee was as informed as we were. So we can all help inform the public of what makes sense and anything we need to do going forward.
I know the budget committee, they used to do tours of all town facilities. And it's been discussed the last couple of years and the, the committee felt they still didn't need one.
Well, if you want, I can reach out to Chairman Douglas and her and I can have a discussion.
No, I'm just saying, so that it, it's been done before in the past. This time it'd be more specific, just the highway. And, and, um, you know, the budget committee, Selectman thought it was a, a good exercise, then, you know, you might want to do that to other town facilities.
Yeah, it could, especially since we've had desire, thought, conversations about moving to a DPW. A lot of it all gets tied into the same conversation. So would, do you want me to reach out to Chairman Douglas?
No, no, I can, I can coordinate it. I just was wondering, um, so I just thought maybe next Monday night, um, if, if that works.
Every Monday? Yes. We've been wanting to do that for a year now.
We can look at, I mean, as long as I am not coaching a baseball playoff game. Which I don't think I will.
And it doesn't have to be a Monday, but I mean, so I'll work.
Whatever fits everyone.
I'll work on email and stuff and, I mean.
See what we can get the majority of the attendance between Selectman and Budget Committee.
Okay.
Seven o'clock?
It'll be dark.
You're bringing the mosquitoes.
It won't be dark.
You're going to want to be down there at six.
Oh, it's dark there, 30.
January 22nd.
Right now, it's, it's, it's eight o'clock.
It's about the rain, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. The old farmers can feel it. My only question would be, with the current situation, would the road agent, are the wounds still too fresh to be doing something like this?
Well, the thing is, we're going to be starting putting together budgets in July.
Yeah, I get that.
And you're going to start probably seeing budget requests. We'll start doing our review, I think, in September.
September, yeah.
We'll have something to talk about on Thursdays, won't we?
And, uh, you know, so I'd like.
We'll stock it in lock.
Yeah. Because I'll, obviously, I'll be working with Kevin and trying to develop his budget. I think, you know, I'd just like to introduce these stuff, the, uh, things that he would like to do.
I think Bob has got a good, a good point. And you've already sat down with Kevin. Kevin, Kevin's got. And you've already sat down with Kevin. Kevin, Kevin's got some background. In highway, roads and stuff like that.
Yeah, he's got a good start background.
You got a list of stuff you want to throw at us too? I know there's a question on fuel that I'm looking for the answers for that. How many gallons you can have there? Cause you only have so many gallons because the fire department wants to move their fuel tank up here. And that is a gray area.
I thought they wanted to move all their, keep all their fuel downtown barn was the conversation.
That's correct. That is the conversation. But you got two temporary tanks out there. You're at the max now on above ground fuel. Unless you get into permits and that gets a little more expensive. Now there's an empty twenty thousand gallon tank down there. There's also two hundred and fifty gallon tanks too that use for diesel fuel.
Yes.
They want to get a one five hundred gallon tank so they can take care of the trucks and everything else. Get the two fuel tanks out, but that is a, when you start getting into fuel storage, the state's got rules and, and stuff like that. We're at the max now, but that's as far as I could go with gasoline. I told Kevin, cause he asked me last week, I said, I'm, I'll look into it and get back to you this week. Okay, there's a little bit more to it. I was gonna tell Troy about that, cause he knows the rules too. Get to the limit.
Yeah.
And I know that.
It's all regular.
Oh, tell me about it.
I mean, it's, you know, and, and it's good discussion. Right now, you know, it's talking money, but you know, in reality, the town, if you're going to dispense your own fuel at some point in time. I don't know when it becomes an advantage to town to actually have an automated card system. So that we, we know exactly what we're pumping into what vehicles and so forth. Yep. But that's not what we have right now, but that's.
The log.
Log. We have a log and it goes to the department. And you gotta fill it out and that's how they used to do it, a log.
Yeah.
And it, it's brought up and it's dispersed with the police department who manages the log, which department's gotten gas. And who and what and stuff like that all the way through. The fire department is pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Gas, oil, but they do the log too. Do you want to come into the nineteenth century or the twentieth century? That's a different question.
Exactly.
Okay, it's expensive. We just put up a Taj Mahal. With fences greater than six foot high. That's all I got to say, but we gotta look into the fuel pot. That's something that came up. You guys have talked about it.
Right. So the highway tour, if we're gonna do something, to be honest with you, it needs, it needs to be done soon. And because we're gonna be right up against a lot of things. Yeah.
To want and not to want is the question.
I mean, I.
I think it's very important.
I think it's beneficial to go do it, but I, I know, I do agree with Bob. Is it, is it too soon? But we're now at the point that we have to go do something because we're getting crunched up in budget season.
Yeah. And you're gonna have, I mean, we're gonna talk about it tonight too. We, you're gonna, we're gonna have to have a conversation about, um, the, you know, appointing a road agent. And, um, well, just in general, the staffing at the.
That's that way highly.
So I, I see this as all going down there, physically seeing, you know, what we've got, what, where we need to make improvements. Um, the equipment that we have, that maybe some equipment is not working for us and doing.
I think it's a great.
Talking about trading stuff in, selling this, it, there's, there's a lot of moving parts down there to, um, to get the department moving forward. And, you know, I thought Kevin, and I'm sure every day that, you know, he, he works. He's gonna still generate more ideas on.
I know I personally need it from an educational standpoint. What do we have? What do we don't have? Where are the needs here or wants? Bob, I don't know how you feel or Kevin, how you feel about, you know, us coming up to speed on what we really, we need to know. Cause we have a lot of decisions we're gonna have to make over the next six months, three months.
Once the budget starts coming, we'll see what's gonna happen. So.
I would think that we'd want to try to just get something on the docket. I mean, to get enough people together, it could take a few weeks.
Yep. Just all not, not around.
Getting into that vacation time of the year for people and kids.
Yeah, then you get, when you get into July.
Yeah.
People are gonna be late too. So how do you want me, you want me to just start trying to coordinate something then or what am I hearing here?
Well, you put this, you put our sock in it. What do you think, Bob? I know.
That's my only concern is that.
I know.
The wounds would.
I think it's all our concerns, you know, and then you.
Where do we go from here?
I do think two things should happen. I think the budget committee should be down there looking as well.
I definitely think they need to be with us.
There's two, there's two parts to this, okay? The selectmen, the budget committee is just looking around to see what, what's there. And what's gonna happen with that. The selectmen and the highway part of, part of it is gonna be looking at the needs more.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we're looking at employment needs and we're looking at equipment needs. Your big thing you'd be looking at is equipment needs from an expenditure standpoint.
Correct. And possibly employment too.
Could be employment, I mean. We will give it two more people for that department, but no way to finance it, but the town has told us we need two more people in the department.
Town has the MRI report is what you're referring to.
Correct. And there was a warrant that said.
A warrant?
There was a warrant article on the last ballot, a citizen petition warrant out of the past saying that we needed two more people for highway. However, within it, it was, um, there was no way of funding it, no mechanism to fund it. So alls we basically have is the public saying, we feel that you need two more people.
And that warrant was put on by the board of selectmen, correct?
No, that was a petition.
Petition.
That was, that was a petition?
That was a petition article.
Okay.
The public brought that to us.
I can't, sorry.
Yeah, and I don't find the Band-Aid.
And it was, yes, it was, uh, so basically it ended up just being what?
It was an advisory.
Advisory, yes, it was advisory. That they feel that we need two more.
It was supported.
It was supported strongly.
So it was a good message. Um, if you come forward with a plan. And then, you know, it's, uh, initially the concept, the voters support it.
Okay. Well, let's schedule a time to go for a little walk.
Next item, the authorization recruitment of a seasonal highway laborer. Mr. Brown.
Alright, so this is, uh, we've, in the last couple of years, for whatever reason, we, we, maybe it's, I think it's the last two years. We've not had, um, you know, a, a seasonal help and.
And in the past, it was what, a high school or a college?
Yeah, it's usually, it's someone that's eighteen years of age or older. So it's usually, um, a college student or, or a high school student. And so this person would basically just be seasonal help, uh, primarily their, their mowing grass, trimming. And then helping off the staff with just general labor needs. Try, you know, we've got to pick up the trash all along the, the bike path. We're mowing constantly and. Right now, by losing Jack, you know, we're, we're down manpower and, um. You know, I'd like to have permission to go forward and try to recruit someone that we typically would pay twelve dollars an hour for this position. By the time we get the word out there, make a selection, I think worst case scenario is we might be able to have them onboard for ten weeks. We don't budget for, we don't have this budget in the salary, but with Jack's departure and the, you know, the interim, you, usually things work out. Um, that it's not a budget concern.
I mean, we could put the other part-time laborer and this seasonal person together, they could be out cutting grass. So the parker, park grass could be cut.
You'd put two people out to cut grass?
Well, I mean, could you put them as a team and go say work as a team while Kevin's back at, you know, at the highway department, working on a piece of equipment, doing something else?
Now I got three guys down there. I only had two.
Well, one's a seasonal, you, you, right now, we have one full-timer and one part-time.
Correct. We had two full-timers.
Two full-timers.
We had two full-timers and one part-timer before. So we're down a full-timer. In past years, except for the last two summers, we haven't had a seasonal. All the years prior, there was a seasonal employee. Usually it was a town student, from what I understand, that we would give employment to.
If the budget's not a concern, then I, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Correct.
There's a lot of grass that needs to be mowed and things like that.
When you think, look at Albuquerque and all that, that stuff has been touched in years.
We're going to Parker Park first.
Oh, yes. Take care of all the conservation land first.
It's not conservation.
It's not?
No, it's not.
It's not conservation.
No.
Okay, that, that, that is a.
So involved about putting the signage up and everything else, I just assumed it was conservation.
It's not. It never really was. It was Parker Park. It's a separate entity. And there's a budget down there to do some more work.
How about Moore's Falls? Is that conservation or is that just a park?
Moore's Falls is conservation. It was not through a court order. It was, it was a court order. It was an agreement from the landowners who did some violating when they're gonna put on a golf course. Somebody hit the wetlands by mistake and it got carried away and it was a court agreement.
Give another parcel of land?
Yeah, okay.
That's how you got the Parker line?
No, that's not Parker. I'm talking about Moore's Falls.
Oh, Moore's Falls.
That was a big one.
Know that, okay. Okay, so, so we should probably have a motion for this.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, I don't think you need a motion, do you?
I can't hire a motion.
Well, you did it already. We didn't even get a vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the town administrator to recruit and hire a seasonal laborer position for the highway department at twelve dollars an hour.
Motion by Mr. Larry.
I'm having reservations, not because.
You're not even in.
Of the position. I just come, the town has always been one, if you're gonna hire somebody, you went to the town, vote voters. We've always done that.
Well, I remember being a kid and helping Roland Bergeron put up signs and patching asphalt and things like that, but that never went.
Did the same thing, Bobby, okay? And I concur with you. It's this money and since this is a part-time, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll agree, agree with it.
That, and then that's my thing too.
Full-time position, can't.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Larry.
Strictly seasonal.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you on that, Kevin. I think that's.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Cause I used to go out and patch. You'd pop, pop bottles of rolling, drive dump truck without a CDL license.
More than that.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
You said?
I said yes.
Second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Smiling on TV.
All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries three zero zero.
This is the happiest board we've had.
Next is a discussion items for full-time road agent, truck driver.
So I'd like to have the board, um, I just want to have a discussion this evening about, obviously, we've, you know, we've had the resignation. So we need to decide on how we're gonna hire a road agent to fill that vacancy. And. Then we have the discussion about whether or not we're gonna create a full-time truck driver position depending on who goes the roadie. So I don't know how the board would like to proceed, but I know that this needs, it needs to be a priority. And, um, I know that, uh, Kevin Brown, who's unofficially acting as, uh, the interim road agent right now. That, you know, he fully expects that we'll be talking to him and at least coming up with some type of a compensation plan, whatever, as an interim, uh, employee. I'm very comfortable talking, um, with Kevin and Josh down there and seeing what I can come up with. Or if the board wants to, you know, I don't know how we proceed, but we need, you know.
I need.
We know it, you're gonna be in September and you need to make sure this department.
I know myself, personally, I want to really understand how the job descriptions evolved. Cause I know at one point in the town, there was a road agent and then there was a laborer position. Road agent was a stipend. Labor was a full-time employee. Based off of documents I've seen, it looks like somewhere back in twenty ten, twenty fourteen, that the two positions got combined.
To vote.
They're combined into one full-time position. So it went from an appointment.
Went from elected.
Elected, I'm sorry, elected road agent and then a laborer to appointment and the two were blended together.
And it was, okay, and back then, and I think Bobby remembers, the laborer was part-time.
Was it part-time? Cause I thought that.
Probably was.
Okay, cause the job description, I thought, I thought it was full-time, but I don't know.
Less was part-time.
Part-time, okay.
Okay. Prior to less, it, there was a gentleman, the French guy, I can't remember his name. Oh, but he was part-time, okay? Jack, with the vote changing and elected to a appointed position, Jack is still full-time, I'm gonna say. And he had a part-timer. Okay, like the young fellow is part-time.
Okay, but, uh, when, so when it went to appointment. The elected road agent in the, in the part-time, what got put together?
Correct.
Okay, so that made a full-time position and that was the one that Jack was appointed to.
Yeah, that's right.
Was that full-time road agent slash.
Correct.
Highway laborer.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's always been our position is that. That Jack was acting like, um.
Too far.
Road agent. It's never, it's not documented clearly, but road agent as a part-time employee and then as the highway manager is a thirty-two hour part-time employee.
And the hours came over forty. So no matter what, you're in a full-time position.
So that, that's the part I want to understand is, okay, do we want to keep the two positions together? Yeah. Or do we want to separate them? And one of them is nothing more than a stipend managerial position. And the other one is a laborer. You're out there, you're plowing roads, you're working with the crew, you're the foreman of the whole entire crew.
So looking for an office person.
Well, that's why I'm just, cause I guess I don't, I personally don't understand fully yet, cause I haven't looked at everything, what the function of each job is. And that's why I want to understand the functions of each job. And then based on the functions, are we better off having somebody who is more of where the next roads we're gonna hit? You know, what's on the plan of paving, cauldron work, things to that extent. That's more of a overall big picture seer. And then you have somebody who carries all the certifications, everything we need to do, the day-to-day laborer, foreman, running a crew.
Well, right now.
I think it should be the same.
Okay. And then that's the part I just, I, I didn't know what went up.
I'm not into, you know, administrative part and then the working part. There's, there's not enough.
Okay, so.
For this town.
Do you agree as a board, we have to, we should go back and look at the job description to make sure that it's encompassing?
For both of them.
Well, it's right now.
And the new one too. I want to see.
Well, right now, it looks like it's the same job description from the one that we, that was on the site from October of twenty, whatever.
So the road, the road agent, um, job description is, is well-written.
That's, that's, that's not a problem.
It's a good one.
Okay.
All the other positions, um.
They're wiggly.
Yeah.
So as we're starting to build this department, going back and really looking at it, do we spend the time to get the job descriptions accurate?
Well, here's something.
Well, you, that's, that's the first thing you want to do and make sure you get them right.
First of all, you've already broken the egg by putting a guy on full-time without a vote. So that's staying, okay? The egg's been broken. Jack was paid, right now, if we get the kid up to full-time, okay, the gentleman who wants to be at this town, I do know him, he wants to work.
Oh, definitely.
Okay. Good work, yeah.
Really good work.
He's a good worker.
Yeah.
Okay, um. And the summer work is a separate issue all by itself, but that takes more time. When you get in the wind, the winter, you're not, you're just pushing, okay? Or you're pushing or you're doing pop, pop, you're not really building anything.
No.
It's just repair.
Everything's frozen, so you're just plowing, doing drainage, ice.
Right, yeah, it's, it's life, okay? Salt in the catch base. It works every time, okay? That was, that affects your stormwater management.
Yes, it does.
Sure it does.
Okay, but the whole idea here is that had a vote. That was put on the ballot to get some help, correct? I don't know what the vote was, exactly who won, who lost or something like that. I don't know what the outcome was.
So it wasn't a binding vote, is that correct?
No, it wasn't binding.
Cause there was no financial piece to it on how to, the mechanism to go and fund those jobs.
Correct.
It was just the town come back saying, you need two more people based on what we, what we see in highway.
So we're gonna be in progress by, by putting on, we already hired somebody on to some emergency thing, from what I understand, okay?
It's Kevin, right?
Yeah. Kevin's got a background in this now. That, that's his background, okay? We're gonna look at that. I think now, guys, before I go on to this right now, let's look at what we got and what's capable, what we got and look at the job descriptions.
I, I agree that we need to start there. I mean, you have to understand, what do we want to do? What do we have? And then what, how do we complement to get exactly what we need?
And complement, use what we got and, and use the input we got on the vote too. Okay?
I agree.
Keep it all within budget.
Yeah, so I mean, I'd like, you know, I, I guess, so that we don't have any miscommunication. I have no problem working on coming up with a plan, bringing it forward, you know. So we have the job.
You could start by just getting the job descriptions we have and just sharing them with the whole board.
Yep.
That'd be great. At least we know where we're starting at and we all can kind of take a look at and see if we need to add subtract or.
So right now, the town is paying for, was paying for two full positions.
Right.
Before Jack.
Two full and one part-time.
One part-time.
Okay, so we had two full-timers with one part-timer thirty-two hours a week.
So we also want to look, okay, if that's.
But remember though, I'm sorry, Kevin.[1792.14] But remember though, I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, it's all right.
Remember that one of those full-time positions was created in, on January first, two thousand nineteen. It was not budgeted for. We didn't go and ask for money. Oh, so, right? The unexpendable. We just created the position and we cut.
The help was needed in order to get through the winter.
Got back on our paving program this year to cover that.
Okay then, so as we hire a new person, that person will meet all the criteria of full-timer. So he'll have a CDL license, he'll be able to do all the things that.
He'll have to meet the job description that we put out.
You already got that out there.
Okay, so sometimes if they don't currently possess it, then you'll be given a certain timeframe to possess it.
I believe if you look at it, says you have to have it or have the ability to.
Usually it's six months.
Correct.
Cause we've been down this road.
Yeah.
Not again.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item is administrator report.
You got nothing, right?
Why does it say no internet? All right, well, I think you already heard about eight Bixby Road, um, we've been to Merrimack District Court, we've been to Superior Court, and that's moving forward. The fire department has received notice that, um, a resident here in town, Bethany Newell, is studying, uh, public health in New England College up in Maine, I believe it is, and she'd like to do an internship program here. The, the, I don't know if it's this fall or this coming spring. It would be no cost to the town. So I just wanted, you know, usually, I don't think it requires any permission from the board, it's more just notification that we're, we'll be working with her and.
What, what is she gonna be doing for?
So it's part of her degree. She, um, she'd like to work with the fifty-five-plus community.
That's great.
Somehow work with them and develop some outreach programs, you know, kind of meet with them, find out what, what they would like to have. How we connect them to the, to the fire department, you know, health and everything.
Great, basically it comes out of the health. It's a public health thing. I've had experience with this, I just wanna tell you right now. Each year we get a call from these girls, these people, they wanna do something, something they can do, something they can't, we can't get involved with. It's something they can come in and do it, uh, just without the fire department. Okay, they can just do it for the town to bring this together.
They could.
Okay, the fire department is just a name, okay? So if she wants to, you know, go out and outreach to these folks about certain things, it's not just the public health, it's not, it's not health itself, it's mental health, physical and environmental. Okay? We've done that before in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I, I said fire department here, but really, probably truly, it's the health.
It's a board of health right here, remember? We are the board of health.
So if you have no problem in us engaging this individual and we'll.
Yep.
She's not gonna go get you groceries, Kevin.
Sure, the fifty-five-plus community would love it.
Yeah, so would Kevin.
Yeah.
Are you singling out my single nice wonderful age? I was even asked for senior disco.
So the, the highway pickup truck, um, recently discovered that it's had some type of damage done to the the rear passenger side. No report has ever been filed on it, but, you know, to me, it appears, I mean, remember when you backed into the tree and it was costing two thousand dollars? It's about two to three thousand dollars worth of damage, I guess. So we'll be filing that with our insurance company. I'm not sure what will come out of it, you know, we're, we don't know any particular time when the when the accident occurred, but, um, I'll keep you here posted on that.
Is it rusted?
No, the bumper's bent, the side corner's bent up, so it really should be repaired, you know, it's a fairly new truck. MRI, we, uh, I reached out to MRI today, uh, we, John Gilchrist has been having some some issues of being, you know, just some personal issues. And we're really starting to see ourselves get behind in some of the inspection work. I mean, we're at the peak right now. MRI, Municipal Resources Incorporated, actually has an individual, an inspector, who is, um, coming off of town and is available to come and help us out.
Who is it?
I try, you know Peter Rowell? He used to work in Pembroke.
Not very long.
Long time ago.
Yeah, you're going back in time.
Yeah, about eight years ago I worked with him. I actually worked with, I don't know if he remembers me or not, but, um, he's a good guy, from what I recall. He's, he's retired, he's, you know.
Is, is he associated with the fire departments?
No, he's a, he's a building inspector.
He's an independent.
He's a building.
That's what I want.
So we'll be, you know, between John and MRI, we'll be trying to use them as, and as we know, we got the interviews coming up this week. So hopefully we'll start making some progress there.
My salary from the past, is that still there or did that get taken out and used somewhere else? Cover John, cause I know he went part-time. Is there more money to get? Cause right now.
Your salary and your budget is, um, still there.
It is. Cause that's wise to use to get, to get him in here, cause John can only do it two days a week and that's it, he's matched. I know.
You know.
I know very much. I know exactly what he's going through. Okay, you could use a guy here for thirty, thirty hours a week. And still, and, and, and that will catch up. He can also do code enforcement or zoning.
There you go.
Okay, that will help you a lot, okay? Cause he got two of them coming for you now.
All right, and then, um, so inspector interview, department head meeting this Thursday, uh, one o'clock, we'll be meeting in here. Um, it'll be our first department head meeting, so.
Backtracking a little bit, I'm sorry. Do you need any approval from us to contact this individual for the building inspection?
Just a heads up.
Okay.
Cause I do think the board actually, six months ago, was on record approving. It just never worked out.
They were doing something.
So, um.
No one wanted to work here.
Thank you. All right, so I think I'll stay away from the fire station dedicate, I'm not sure.
It's next Wednesday.
So the date's right here? It was the following week.
Okay, Wednesday?
Wednesday, June the nineteenth, be doing ribbon cutting. Just got announced. It'll be a short program, but it'll be, we'll be getting the word out, so.
It's beautiful, isn't it?
Yeah.
And you're, they're gonna have a way, anybody who wants in the community can schedule it to use it.
And then I just cut and pasted in my town administration report here, um, a picture of working, Jason Brennan had, um, sent a conceptual photograph of what he would like to do for improvements at Hillcrest in three A.
It's nice.
And so what he's looking to do is use that vinyl fencing, the split, split rail vinyl fencing and, um, to install a directional sign. He's looking to try to get a granite post and, um, you don't have any point for this fires, building town office. I think it looks good. I think it'll be, it'll clean it up. Um, we're gonna have to work with, obviously with New Hampshire DOT, those are both state roads and right-of-way issues and that's.
That always looked nice when Rosie used to do the flowers. And, yeah, they always looked nice, but they use it for a parking lot on the side, cause I used to mow the lawn around there. Okay, on both sides, cause we need the cars, police cruisers, where they're watching people speeding, I kept their area mowed. Okay, so, and the problem is, the last couple of years, it's been a very important intersection because of Avisource, the gas, the water leak and everything else. Okay, I'm not, I'm not really fond of vinyl fences in that corner right there to block it off both ways. Cause they use that, that grassy area to work, okay? And even the towns do, or even, you know, the, the state parks their equipment there. When they're doing the roads and stuff, so you can either really sit down with the D at the DOT, or if they leave gate openings so they can go in and out of there. That's all I, you know, that's division five.
Yeah. So I guess that, you know, Jason's looking for is some feedback from, from board, you, you know, before he pursues, pursues this. Well, obviously, we gotta work with District Five. But before he goes forward and actually finalizes this, the board want him to come in and do a final presentation, make sure you're all.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
You gotta be able to still work in that area behind the fence and we go like that.
Then maybe it could be come down to just eliminating one section of.
Like I said, you have openings both ways. Okay, vinyl is never final in snow. Okay, so he may, he may wanna keep that farther back than he did up the other end, cause that's a corner and they push way the way. Lucky the sign's still standing.
Wood is good.
You have anything else, Troy?
That's it.
All right, selectmen report. Mister Lynch.
Nothing.
I have nothing, Mister Larry.
I have nothing either.
All right, great. We have no items removed for consent. We had no other business. Our next regular meeting will be on June twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. We do have one other item that is on the agenda. It's a non-meeting and non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of an employee. We will only come out of non-public to adjourn the meeting.
So wait, that's just a typo.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with that. I was gonna say.
Okay, it's just non-public session.
I was gonna ask, we're, we're not meeting?
Thank you. Roll call, Mister Lynch.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, as habit, we are now in non-public. Thank you for watching and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.